Join us later?
Yeah, and I'm recording now as well.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I've called the meeting to order. Roll call, I would like to introduce Dennis Ferraro. He's our new planning commissioner as of the last board meeting. And he's a neighbor of mine. And he and his wife were walking down Eagles Nest Road with their three dogs. And I was bringing in the trash cans and they went by and all of a sudden it dawned on me. We needed another planning commissioner. So I ran out after them and I accosted them in the street. And I asked them if they were interested in being a planning commissioner. And luckily, one of them said yes. So I think Dennis is going to bring a lot of skills, a lot of knowledge that I certainly didn't have. And I think there's a lot of things that he knows that he has skills that I don't even know after 15 years. So anyway, so welcome Dennis or Denny Ferraro. And so with that, you just need to say your name, where you live as part of the roll call.
Sure, Denny Ferraro, ambushed by Mike Springer, living at 238 Eagles Nest Road, Marquette, Michigan.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wiegand?
Dave Wiegand, Brooklyn Road.
Mr. Hakinen?
Steve Hakinen, Lake Enchantment Trail.
And Mr. Johnson?
Jim Johnson, White Oak Drive.
Okay. With that, next thing is the approval of the agenda. I would like to add one thing to the agenda. We have Dr. Bea online with us. I would like to move him to privileged comment at the beginning. That would be just before public comment. So that would take place of number five. And then move public comment to six or... Anyway, so that's my request and hopefully we have support for that. That would be my motion. And if we have support, I can tell you why this is a good idea.
I would make a motion or?
Sure, we need a second.
Oh, seconded.
Thank you, Jimmy. Mr. Wiegand, repeat the motion. Well, actually, let me just do this. Dr. Bea is the leader of the Sustainable Built Environment Initiative. He's also the leader of our MACH A2 Climate and Health Adaptation projects that MSU has been working on. And they're helping us design visions of what the corridor could look like and what kind of things we could do in the US 41 corridor that would improve, would be more sustainable and improve health and climate for the future. So with that, when we get to that, I'd like to introduce Dr. Bea. So you want to repeat the motion, Mr. Wiegand?
Yeah, I've got a motion to approve the agenda as amended. And that is to add privilege comment at item number five and renumber items five through 13. It was moved by Chairman Springer, who is a?
Support firm, I believe, Jim John.
Yeah, you, yes?
Me?
Yeah.
Yes, oh, yes.
And supported by Jim?
Yes.
And I am a yes. And Dennis?
Yes.
And Steve?
Yes.
Passes seven oh.
Thank you. So we have, now we have the minutes of the previous... I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, it passes five oh.
Start in a round. So now we have the previous meeting minutes of August the 12th. Somewhere in there, we're talking, oh, here it is. It's on page two, second paragraph from the bottom. We're talking about Jake breaks. And Springer suggested the use of not combustion, but compression breaking. So that's the only thing I saw that... Which is same thing as Jake breaking, I think. Anyways, Steve Hakinen knows more about it than I do.
Yeah.
So with that, do we have a motion to approve with that correction? Or do we have any other corrections?
Yeah, without objection, I would make an amendment to approve the minutes as amended.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, who seconded?
Steve.
Okay. Mr. Wiegand, would you call the question?
I was approving to approve the minutes as amended. And I'm a yes, Steve?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And Chairman Springer?
Yes.
Passes five nothing.
Thank you. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce to you Dr. Wayne Bea from Michigan State University. Wayne, take her over, please.
Sure, well, thank you Chairman Springer. And you know, as it was introduced, so my name is Wayne Bea. I'm with the School of Planning, Design and Construction at Michigan State University. And as Chairman Springer has mentioned, I've been involved with helping to spearhead the Climate Health Adaptation Project in Marquette Township. Just by way of background, those that are on the call that Zoom here meeting that may not have been involved with this. We received a grant and the township received a technical assistance grant from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services in cooperation with MSU through a Centers for Disease Control Grant Initiative that focuses on climate health adaptation. And Marquette Township successfully applied for the grant application. And over the last nine months has been involved in developing a report. And that involves both planning and design recommendations for the transportation corridor. And what you see on the screen here is kind of that draft report that was delivered in June. It's in a final draft stage. And so if there's any, any final recommendations, changes that you have, particularly in any of the narrative, you know, now's the time. And what, what you have, what you see in front of you on pages 39 through 47, there are specific planning recommendations. And just to kind of recap, we had a meeting, kickoff meeting in December, actually a face-to-face meeting in December of 2019. That was, we ended up getting input as to what was, what's working, what's not along the corridor and specific input regarding climate and health. We came back in May with some design and planning recommendations. And then based on the input we had at that May meeting, we had a final presentation on June 25th at a virtual meeting. So in the report, that's been, I think, sent, the link's been sent to the planning commission here as well. There are 47 recommendations in total. And it links back to just looking at the column here. So you have what the design consideration was based on the input received at the first meeting. It relates back to the climate health concern. And at the bottom of the page, which is probably cut off, there's a, there we go. So you can see whether it was vector awareness, air quality, emergency response, extreme events, or water related. So what the climate health issue, how it relates, where you can find that in the previous volumes that were done for the county and the three volume series. So if you want to make a reference back to that, how it relates to at that point in time, the, the local plan, whether it's your, your comprehensive plan, master plan, or other documents, the specific planning recommendation and then some action steps. So really, obviously, these are, these are recommendations that will take, you know, several years to implement. But it, it's helpful with these 47 recommendations as they align to your master plan and other documents as you're seeking grants and implementation, you know, working with MDOT and other funding partners to reference this document for some of that implementation. So I would just encourage members of the, the planning commission and then the committee that, that Chairman Springer has been a part of, along with Jason McCarthy, to, if there's any input that you have there in moving forward. The next steps at this point are to finalize the report, get it, get you some hard copies and a final electronic copy of that. And also then follow up with the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. There is a little mini grant that they have where they were actually asking for each of the two communities we've been working with, we've also been working with Nagani, that there's some money to develop an implementation piece to this, which is a small grant that could help build a rain garden, like the picture you see in front of you or one of the other pictures where it was Pete's Pass or some of the areas. So in short, with the planning commission and the committee to help prioritize maybe one or two areas where there's actually some money that could be used to do a small project along the corridor. So we really seek your input on that and as part of that next phase. So I think that that's kind of where we are overall in the process. And I will mention that this has received not only state, but some national recognition. And is, and the township actually has been requested Chairman Springer and Planner McCarthy to present at the Michigan Association of Planning Conference on this topic. So I know that, that request was just sent out by MAP today. And we can follow up on that. But in short, there's design recommendations that go along with these planning recommendations. So these visuals are meant to be illustrations, not final design. I mean, there's not cost estimates that have put together, been put together with these designs or final engineering or, or environmental engineering perspective to it. But they're meant to help build consensus as to what can be done along the corridor that covers four broad themes of connectivity, aesthetics, revitalization, and placemaking. But then some of these underarching recommendations that help with climate and, and health concerns that were expressed along the corridor. So with that, I guess I'll stop and answer any questions that you might have.
So I missed the date, I'm sorry.
Sure, the date for the?
Presentation or?
Yes, yes, we had the, the presentation meeting three was June 25th. And so we have, we have a recording of that final presentation. We have the PowerPoint that's been forwarded along and, and the report. So, so yes, that was, that was.
When is the presentation you're going to make to, is it Michigan Association of Planners?
Yes, so like many conferences, this one is going to be a virtual conference. And it's, it's, it's scheduled for October 7 through 9. And they've, they've liked, there was a proposal that was put in by Extension Educator Brad Newman and myself, along with Aaron Ferguson from Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. That was accepted. But they wanted to hear from a planning official and the planner as to how the community is moving forward with some ideas for implementing some of these recommendations. So this is perfect. I know you've been involved with an upcoming MDOT project. You've updated your master plan and some other documents. So the, the rest of the state's very much interested in hearing how you get down to the local level on some of these climate health adaptation type projects. So in short, the meeting, the presentation will be, will be recorded ahead of the 7 through 9th. And then it's going to be made available to participants during October 7 through 9. So we have flexibility on when that can be recorded. So I can follow up with you Chairman Springer on that following this meeting.
Two questions. One, what can we do to help? And also, will you send us the link as soon as that's available? So we can either participate or listen in?
Yeah, are you, are you talking about the planning conference?
Yes.
Yes, so what, what'll happen with that is actually, actually the, a team of presenters will be both Aaron Ferguson from Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, Brad Newman from MSU Extension, and myself. And they've asked for a, for two people from the local, you know, from Marquette Township to also?
If Jason McCarthy and myself were to participate, that's, that would help?
Absolutely, I think it would. For really, for really two, two reasons. I think it, it gives further exposure to the township as to, you know, this, this type of work. And there's a lot of state agencies and different funding partners that attend the planning conference. So I think that they will be intrigued with some of the work that you've done. So it could open up some other linkages and opportunities for the township. And secondly, just as an educational component to share with other planning officials around the state as to the type of work that you've been involved in over the past year and really several years with Marquette County and then more specifically with your own climate health corridor project.
Okay, that's great, Wayne. I think we can put something together to help this move forward.
That would be great. And then the other, the other item that I mentioned that would be helpful is if you were to shortlist maybe one or two small projects where a rain garden or some type of intervention that relates to one of the design recommendations that we put forward, that there might be some interest in if you receive some money from Michigan Department of Health and Human Services to implement. They're looking for actually a pilot project that they could actually seed some money to, to, to do a demonstration project. So that's the other, I guess, deliverable next step that would be helpful, either from the planning commission or your, your climate health task force that was put together to help identify.
We need input from you to do, I mean, what kind of money are we talking about for this? And you have to understand that there is no money for Marquette Township right now.
Right. No, I understand, no, this was, this was, this was, as, we can follow up. I would suggest we set up a Zoom session with, involve Jason McCarthy and, and you Chairman Springer with Michigan Department of Health and Human Services to go over the details of what's involved.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye now, enjoy the rest of the meeting.
So, next thing, first of all, I wish I'd seen Attorney Zappa online at the beginning. I should have asked to move 7A to the top of the agenda or right after public comment, new business. I know it's unfinished business, but he's here with us. And Secretary Wiegand or actually Denny Ferraro, I mean, Robert's Rules of Order. Is there any way we can move Attorney Zappa up next? Because we can discuss these other things.
I don't think anything precludes you from making a motion at any time during the meeting.
Say that name?
You want to amend the agenda as you go on?
Yeah, I'd like to do that.
Everybody does, but I don't know of any problem.
Okay, so is it okay if we move Attorney Zappa, 7A, after public comment? We still got to do public comment. So that's my plan. Okay, so it's public comment. Is there anyone out there that would like to comment on anything? Hopefully pertains to the planning commission. We have KBIC, we have a Manny Lentine, maybe Eagle Apple. Okay?
Good evening.
Good evening. Hey, Matt?
Hi, yeah, this is Matt and Jane Sorrell from Eagles Nest Road. Did I, we, we got in a little bit late, had a hard time finding the meeting link, but we're here. Thanks for having us, for doing this. Are you, are you welcoming public comments at this time?
It is, it's time for public comment.
Okay, I see Denny here. Dennis, he was here first. If he had prepared remarks, I would defer to him first.
Denny?
No, go ahead, Matt.
Matt, so he's actually, this is not, this is time for you.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I, this may be, this may be covered ground for the planning commission and Marquette Township Board. And obviously recently in the news, we were all surprised by our area being considered as a, an aeronautic site for both horizontal and vertical spacecraft to be launched here. And as, as, as I've educated myself on this, I have two documents here. One dated October 28, 2019, from, to Mr. Gavin Brown at Michigan Aerospace Manufacturing Association, submitted by Stephen Schindin, Director of Operations of Sawyer International. He was responding to several things. One, for requests for information about a vertical launch facility at Granite Loma. Obviously, that's in the Powell Township. It can be seen from my home here on Eagles Nest Road. So we're deeply concerned about this. A couple of things. I attended that, that Powell Township meeting and, and as did another concerned citizen. And we asked for them to take action as our first line of defense. For those of us here in Marquette Township, we asked them for a moratorium to be considered. And they passed a moratorium for six months. Not to take up any, any consideration for aeronautical things. I'd like to state specifically here in the letter, in the, in the request for information, back to Mr. Brown at, I'll call it Mama. And you may, may have seen a letter, this, this letter. If not, I'd be happy to forward it to you Chairman Springer or anybody else on, on the planning commission. I want to cite one thing in here. If available, this is a letter specifically from Mama to the Sawyer author. If available, please provide any documentation identifying existing noise restrictions and land use zoning in the proximity to the proposed site. Now, this is the Loma Farm site. The author of this letter, whom I mentioned, he specifically says that it's not zoned. It's zone timber production, mostly in eastern and northern portions. It's also zoned lake shore and river, with some portions of these zoned for other uses, timber in specific. He specifically cites that aerospace operations are not a permitted use and construction of a vertical launch site on this property would likely require rezoning of an industrial, to industrial and an amendment to the zoning ordinance to include aerospace operations as permitted use in an industrial district. Clearly, we're asking the support of Powell Township that they would not entertain this proposal. Now, the Township Planning Commission may be aware of a study that was paid for by evidently Sawyer International for the Michigan Launch Initiative, where they proposed four sites for this vertical launch site. One of them, vertical launch site number one, was proposed at Little Presquale Park area. If I'm being redundant, please step in. That falls?
The only thing I want to say, Matt, you realize you're talking to Marquette Township that doesn't have any control over the zoning in Powell.
No, no, I understood, I prefaced that comment, but?
Certainly send those documents to us so we can read those things and consider that for a future agenda item.
Well, two, one, what I'd like to ask is that these two townships, being adjacent to one another, participate and collaborate. However, there are four launch sites in this, in this proposal by Explorer Solutions. Launch site number one was in Little Presquale Park area, which is in Marquette Township. It's to be assumed that none of these are taken off the table. And they, they go on to say that there's no residential population in the area, et cetera, et cetera. So I don't know what, what ordinances there might be in Marquette Township to preclude the use of Little Presquale area, which does happen to fall in, in Marquette Township.
Well, that's a state of Michigan. So that's an avenue right there you need, we need to pursue, those of us that are concerned about this.
Okay, so as a citizen, I guess what I would ask that that be pursued, that we should not assume that because it's state-owned property, that they're, they don't fall under the zoning regulations for, for proper use, you know, use in state, in Marquette Township.
So let us do this, Matt. Let us put this on our next agenda first.
Right.
And if you would send us those documents?
Okay.
That would help, so.
We could, and I guess I'll just go one step further. Until such time as, as these documents, you know, you guys get a chance to review them, we would really like to consider, you know, have you communicate with Powell Township in the best interest of, of us. Because it should, it should be said that one of the, one of the items in here of a launch site in, at Granite Loma, that for each launch, five to six residents would have to be evacuated prior to the launch. And I don't know where they reside, it's not clear.
Yeah. Yeah, I read Mindy's Cantaloupe's email on that and she highlighted that. And I'll, I'll look into that. But this is really going to have to come from the board. And planning commission can entertain it and have it on the agenda and discuss it. But it's really going to have to be a board directive. So I would recommend that you attend the board meeting next Tuesday night.
Okay.
And so, and make public comment there, so that they're aware of this as well.
Okay, I would just ask formally then that, you know, the planning commission take note of the fact that launch site, vertical launch site number two was in the township of Marquette, albeit on state land. And to see whatever, you know, jurisdiction or whatever zoning might be impacted for that particular site.
I'm sure your comments will be in the minutes, next seven minutes, and we will?
Okay, great, thank you for your time.
Also asking to have it on the agenda for the next planning commission meeting. I believe it's September 9th.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sorrell. Okay, at this point, I'd like to ask Attorney Zappa to come and talk to us about this, you sent us a letter dated August 25th with a recommended zoning ordinance. So would you please tell us about that?
I'd be happy to, it's actually not a zoning ordinance. It's an independent health, safety and welfare standalone ordinance that deals with regulation of both medical marijuana and adult use recreational marijuana. What I attempted to do is incorporate most or all of the recommendations and concerns that the planning commission had in the initial draft that it sent to me a while back. And as I explained in other correspondence and communications, there have been in the meantime, the Marijuana Regulatory Agency and the LARA have issued their no longer emergency rules. So there are some new rules that have to be complied with as well. We've taken a serious look at those and have tried to incorporate some of those. I realize you just got this, the ink is practically still wet on it. And you, so you haven't had an opportunity to really digest what's in it. A couple of things I'd like to? A couple of things I'd like to just direct your attention to though, because it's really not ready for a recommendation to the township board, or perhaps not even really for a public hearing yet. Take a look at page six, for example, and I don't necessarily mean right now, but that's the page that has your chart that I put together based on what was in the materials that were provided to me on the various types of marijuana, medical marijuana facilities, or recreational marijuana establishments. And that's the key terminology that the state uses and differentiates between, if it's adult-use recreational marijuana, it's an establishment. If it's a medical marijuana business, it's a facility. But a couple of things that stood out to me, that you're certainly free to legislate as you wish, but there are provisions in the state law for equivalent licensing, for example. And what that is, I addressed it real briefly in the correspondence, is a grower, even though the rules and the statutes are different for medical marijuana, from adult-use recreational marijuana, they still are performing essentially the same function. Same, same is true of secure transporters, same is true of processors. And there are a great deal of similarities between medical marijuana provisioning centers and adult-use retailers. So what stands out a little bit, and you're certainly free to keep it this way, but processors for medical marijuana and adult-use marijuana, for example, are not allowed in the same district. The districting is not identical. They are both allowed in general business and segregated business. One is allowed in resource production, the other is not. There may be some, it's beyond the scope of legal review for me to say, you should do this or you shouldn't do that. But that's something I guess I'd like more input from on the planning commission is, what is the rationale and the reasoning for that to stand? Same thing when you get down to provisioning centers and retailers, and you're allowing a provisioning center for medical marijuana where a, a patient can, for example, go in and purchase his or her medical marijuana in the development district. By the same token, there is no corresponding provision and allowing for a marijuana retailer in the recreational field in the development district. You don't have to be consistent, but those are some things that you ought to take a look at and have some discussion on, on do you want to have those differences? And what I started to mention at one point is there are equivalent licenses available. So in some municipalities, for example, the applicants are requesting licensing as both a medical marijuana provisioning center and as a retailer for recreational marijuana. So that would be, they would still be required to obtain two separate licenses, but they could co-locate in some instances, and, and it's not quite as simple as that, but it can be accomplished. So you need to have that discussion a little bit, perhaps, in terms of whether you wish to facilitate that or to leave this as it stands. And that's pretty much my, my comment on that area. Another area that a lot of other municipalities, or at least some other municipalities are taking a look at is designated consumption establishments are, there are not a lot of rules in even the rules from the Marijuana Regulatory Agency addressing those, and there are none in your proposed materials that you sent to me. So the question becomes what type of standards or regulations should govern a business of that type? That is a fairly pervasive type of business. At a minimum, you may wish to have, you know, the odor requirements that are incorporated with most of the other types of businesses and so forth, but that's an area for further discussion. A number of municipalities have elected to eliminate that or disallow that as a use, not suggesting one way or the other, that you should do that or should not do that. If you decide you're not going to do that, well, that gets rid of the question of what kind of regulations or standards should it have, however. So that's one of the reasons I didn't suggest anything. And in addition, that's more of a legislative function of the, or a recommendation function of the planning commission than it is legal review in any way. But I, I point that out, that that's missing in this ordinance. If you wish to retain, currently there are three, oh, I'm sorry. No, the two, there are two designated consumption establishments permitted or allowed. One other thing I should just point out is grower licenses, for example, or processor licenses, generally to be a medical marijuana grower, you're going to need one license. And if you want to be a recreational marijuana grower, you're going to need another license. So two separate licenses. The way I interpreted the materials from the planning commission was that the total number would be total licenses, not total addresses. And the distinction is that you can co-locate licenses and businesses. So if an entity wished to apply for both, let's say, a Class A medical marijuana grower and a Class A recreational marijuana grower license, that is two licenses, even though it might be all at 123 Main Street at the same address. So you need to just confirm that that's the intent. That's what I gleaned the intent to be from the materials I was given. The other way of doing it would be to say that you can't have more than two different growing addresses in the township, or three, or five, or zero. I mean, that the number is immaterial. But I, I just would like confirmation that that was the intent indeed, to have two growers, regardless of how many locations, could be two locations, could be one location. And the same, and I'm picking on growers here, but the same is true of, of anything that there's more than one allowed of in the township. That would include provisioning centers slash retailers as well. Or designated, well, that consumption establishments, that's a bad example, but processors, gear transporters. So those are a couple of areas that I'd like you to just look at and consider. And then, a couple of things that I think we're, everybody's on the same page on. It's absolutely imperative that any license be subject to a special use permit by the township. That's in there. I had also recommended that there be a provision, at least strongly recommending that an applicant obtain pre-qualification through the state of Michigan before even applying to the township. That's an available option with the state, and I think it will help expedite and streamline and maybe thin out some applicants, so it doesn't waste either the applicant's time or the township's time on that. So that's incorporated in there as well. And then there's also, which the township also had a, a section regarding provisional licensing. And that's, that's in there as well, and I will go over in detail. I know the commission is familiar with that concept. But there is a little bit, look at this and do not treat this as gospel on this is how everything in here has to be because the attorney said so. There will be a limited number of things like that, that I will say that on, but by and large, this is a working document. And what the plant, the planning commission needs to make this fit, Marquette Township, its residents, its business community. So if there are things that you look at now that you see this in its redrafted form, that you've got a lot of questions on, or that you think doesn't necessarily comport with what you had in mind, by all means, tear it apart and, and revisit this, and I'll be happy to work with the planning commission in any way, shape or form to get a final version that everyone is happy with and comfortable with. And one of the things that you may want to spend some time looking at is the whole procedure of which step should come first, because just by the nature of what the state has done in its legislation, there's a bit of a chicken and egg phenomenon going on here. So could, could the order that things happen in be different? Yes. I looked at this, I drew myself little flowcharts and came up with my initial impression of what I thought made some sense. You're not going to hurt my feelings in the least if you look at that and say, wouldn't it really be logically more beneficial to do, to change this or do that? I welcome that type of input. Multiple sets of eyes are always better than one set of eyes. So don't hesitate to look at it, to ask questions, and to make this work, so that it's something that the whole planning commission feels is consistent with what you had in mind in the first place.
Thank you, Attorney Zappa. It's time for, this is a discussion, so planning commissioners, what do you have to say or ask Attorney Zappa about this?
Yeah, you know, I appreciate the fact that, you know, the minutia of this is that the duplicity of licenses for a medical marijuana establishment, grower, seller, retailer, are they all differentiated by, is a processor a medical marijuana processor and a recreational marijuana processor? I mean, are there licenses, two separate licenses, that can conceivably be purchased or gone after by all of these different categories of marijuana establishments?
Most. There are a couple that are not, that are only, for example, a micro-business. Marijuana micro-business, there is no medical marijuana micro-business out there. And it's my underst- The designated consumption establishment generally falls under the recreational or what I'll call the adult-use marijuana category. That one is still pretty murky in terms of guidelines from the state, but is, the consensus seems to be that that is strictly a recreational facility or establishment as well. And then the temporary event thing, which I had just more or less recommended that, that that be a zero at this point on allowed establishments, and you can override that by, certainly, but I foresee that's going to be a very conflicted type of establishment or entity until we get some more guidance from the state of Michigan on that one. They're going to be really hard to police and require the most township input for resources to just make those work. So if you really want a lot of temporary events in the township, you can, you can authorize 15 of them, you know, we, we can make that work. My initial recommendation, if you're asking my opinion, is make that a zero for now. You can always amend that in a year if we find that these are working exceedingly well in, in other jurisdictions or municipalities that have adopted an ordinance. But so, yeah, long answer for a short, simple question is, most of them have dual licenses, but there are a couple of unique ones that don't.
You know, and I, and I think when we were considering the business type and the number of allowed, I, I think we may not have realized the nuance of that. So when we said we're going to allow two growers, is that somebody over here and somebody over there could have both licenses, and then he could grow marijuana, recreational marijuana, and that. So I think that's something we're going to have to consider yet, because I don't think we, we realize the ramifications of what we were considering at that point.
That's why I brought it up, because whichever way you want it, we can make that work. I can come up with wording that, that makes it either way, and it's actually not a hard change, a quick and easy change to make if you want to go make it two addresses as opposed to two licenses. But that's, that's not a, it's improper for me to say this is what you should do, but you got to have that discussion on what you want.
Let's have other commissioners weigh in on the discussion.
Mike?
Dave? Mr. Weaver?
Yeah, I guess a couple questions. I guess my, my opinion on the equivalent licensing would be that it would not, the numbers would not apply to separate addresses, but rather licenses. That's just my initial reaction to that. The other comment I would make would be, if I've got the, the direction we're going with this, is we're moving most of this to a board ordinance, and we're going to keep the zoning portion in Article, what is it, 15, and maybe in the definition section, which is two. Thanks, Jason. Which, and, and I think that, that would be appropriate. I can understand where that's a little more enforceable, because there's some, some enforcement that must go on with the, with the ordinance, and that's kind of hard to do out of these planning ordinance. So I can see that, making that switch. I think we're going to have to look at this as a commission and get back together on the ninth. I think the ninth is our next meeting, and take a little better look at it on the ninth with our comments, because I just picked it up today and was looking at it. I read through it once, but it's kind of a lot to digest. And then the timeline, there seems to be a lot of discussion out there on the timeline that we're moving this forward on. When we started out with this initially, we said it's going to take, probably, we'll try and, we'll have it done this year. That gives us to December, and everybody's hitting the panic mode from what I can see, that we're not going to make those lines. But I, I believe we're, we're headed in that direction, and we're going to be very close to that December timeline. We're looking at a discussion on the ninth of September on what direction we want to go, whether we want, we're talking equivalent licensing or addresses, and how much of this we're going to move into a board ordinance. And I think we're pretty much in agreement that the only thing we're going to keep in the zoning text amendment is Articles 15 and 2. I would be in favor of moving, initially of moving the consumption to zero for now, until we can always change it. But I think we need to get a little bit of a handle on what happens once this moves into, into law, and see exactly what goes on. And that's the other reason that I think we should keep the, consider equivalent, equivalent licensing as opposed to addresses, so that we can keep a little better handle on who's doing what and how much of a explosion this is going to be, if at all. It may not be a big deal, but you never know until it actually gets out there. So I think there is, there's a lot to be said for requiring pre-qualification before they apply at the township level. I think that keeps us not so busy with something that never comes to fruition. So I think we should consider putting that in there. But most of this, in fact, is going to, if we just do Articles 15 and 2, I know in the board ordinance, there would also be a definition section. I think the trick is going to be to keep those two the same, so that we don't have conflicting definitions, but I think that would be the direction I would, I would think we'd go. And I think everybody ought to take a look at it and come back on the ninth and discuss it a little bit after we've had a chance to read through that.
Thank you, Dave. Mr. Johnson or Mr. Hakkinen?
Yeah, I guess what I'm wondering, I agree with Dave, first of all, I think we need more time to discuss this. And I'd like to wait till the next meeting also to have more of these questions answered. also, to have more of these questions answered and discuss it further. But with the consumption part of it, wasn't that something that was brought up at the time for us to discuss, or was that something new that's been added? Because I don't remember anything about the consumption part of it on there.
You must have discussed at some, like, to some extent, because in the chart of how many, there's a two in it. So you had to go through and decide, well, we want two growers, we want three provisioning centers slash retailers, and we want two, not more than two designated consumption establishments. Now, whether the discussion, I wasn't privy to any of those discussions, so whether it was anything more than that 32nd synopsis, I have no way of knowing, but it had to have come up, because that's not something I would have just inserted on my own.
Okay. Did we talk about that before? Do any of you remember? I don't, it just doesn't seem like it was much of a discussion at the time.
You know, there might not have been, but it's certainly worth discussing now, so it's good that you focused on that or bringing that up. Denny Ferraro?
I don't think there was much of a discussion on that. I mean, we went through and put the numbers on it. We did come up with the number two, obviously. But I think the numbers aside, I think if we work on the wording right now and separating out the recommended board ordinance versus the Article 15 and Article 2 definition section, I think if we work on those, if we want to change the numbers when we get back together on the ninth, that's easy enough to do if we just got the wording right.
Okay, Denny Ferraro?
Yeah, I just want to follow up. I have some of the same questions related. Mr. Zappa, did you mean to say that as the ordinance is drafted now, that a person could hold, for example, a license for a medical, I'm sorry, for a adult-use retail establishment, and then have like five different locations for, under that same license?
No. What I meant was, some entities would like to sell marijuana, both to medic, as a medical marijuana provisioning center--
Right.
--and as a recreational grower, I'm sorry, recreational retailer, sorry.
Like the fire station.
And that would still have a requirement of two state licenses and two township licenses, even if it's not one place. And there are numerous criteria on what have to be met at the state level to accomplish that. It's not just a matter of having the product all intermingled in the same counter or display case, and there are a lot of criteria, but it can happen, and that's why I wanted to clarify. And just before I forget, kind of on that point, one of the benefits of having the ordinance as a standalone general health, safety, welfare ordinance, rather than as part of your zoning ordinance, is the ease of amending. If you do decide that, well, we need to fine tune this area over here, or we need to adjust the number of one of the categories of businesses, that can be done much more quickly and expediently in a standalone ordinance than it can be in the zoning ordinance.
Right. And I had another question regarding Section 4, which deals with the maximum number of marijuana businesses. Under the business type column, number four is provisioning center slash marijuana retailer. Now, when I saw that, I found it a little bit confusing, because a provisioning center, it seems like in the rest of the ordinance, deals with a medical marijuana facility--
Correct.
--and not a adult-use establishment. But a marijuana retailer could be a facility for medical dispensing and a retailer, or a retailer could be just an adult-use retailer. So I found it a little confusing that those two were put together and that there were three allowed. And my question is, wouldn't it make more sense to have provisioning center two marijuana, adult marijuana, provisioning center retailer two, adult provisioner, adult establishment retailer two? In other words, you'd add one more, but it seems like this is kind of confusing, because it mixes the two definitions.
You could do it that way. What my, again, what my perception of the Planning Commission's intent was, is that the Planning Commission doesn't really care how those three licenses are allocated. Even if one address is selling medical marijuana, and one address is selling recreational or adult-use marijuana, that's two licenses. So it could be three and zero, it could be one and two, it could be two and one, the way it's set up, so it leaves some flexibility as far as how those three are divided up. But either way, once three licenses are issued, that's it. That's the end of it.
Right. And I'm not advocating for, you know, multiplying the number of retail marijuana establishments, but under this particular designation, where you only have three for a provisioning center slash marijuana retailer, you could have a medical facility provisioner who is also a retailer take up two licenses, and then you'd only have one left for just a strict retailer.
Correct.
Okay. So I guess what I'm saying is, is that why wouldn't you give equal treatment to the retailers? You know, you could have two retailers, two medical facilities, retailing. That's all I'm saying. Just a question. The other question I had is, you know, I know that Michigan, I believe Michigan has some type of, either it's a bond or a requirement for insurance for a medical facility, medical provisioners, and maybe also adult provisioners for adulterated product. But is there, underneath the designated consumption establishment, and if we're going to move it to zero, I guess it doesn't matter, but underneath a designated consumption establishment, that would be equivalent to a bar? And bars, I believe in Michigan, have dram shop liability, where if you over-serve somebody, an innocent party who's injured by that over-served patron can sue the establishment. Do you know, has, is there any type of equivalent liability and/or insurance that a designated consumption establishment in Michigan would have? So if you had a consumption establishment and they had insurance, you could then, if you're going to allow that anyway, you could then have some safety for the public who might have been innocently injured by a doped-up consumer? You know anything about that, or?
Well, I can say that it's evolving, and there are lots of issues. I am not aware of any legislation that's been adopted yet at this point that specifically creates the equivalent of serving an able-bodied, well, serving a person while visibly intoxicated. There are criminal sanctions in place, so that if a person is under the influence of marijuana, they can be char, after they leave any type of facility, they can be charged criminally. The civil liability of that is much murkier, and part of the issue that is floating out there is it's easier to determine whether a person is under the influence of alcohol than it is of marijuana. We have breathalyzers and so forth, that regardless, we can debate all day long how, you know, how reliable those are and so forth, and the false positives and the tolerance that a person builds up. But the frank point is that there are ways of addressing and measuring that in the alcohol context, that there are not in the marijuana context, at least at this point.
Right. I guess I was just wondering if there would be some, if we're going to allow consumption bars, marijuana bars, would we also want to have a regulation that imposed on the business owner that they have insurance to protect any innocent person that may have been, may be injured because of an over-served person? That's all. But I know it's, you said it's evolving, so.
Liability insurance, so.
Yeah, that gets us back to the issue of just how much authority a local government unit has in terms of imposing insurance requirements, as opposed to the dram shop facilities, for example, have mandatory insurance requirements, and they haven't, they have not been adjusted in years, so they're abysmally low, but they're there at least, they exist. I'm not sure, and I think it's an excellent question, I'd have to contemplate that a little bit, as far as whether a local municipality has the authority to require insurance in order to operate in their jurisdiction. You know, there are arguments both ways on that. Another difference, when there isn't, if there isn't going to be the equivalent of a dram shop statute, is currently the dram shop statute prohibits for a visibly intoxicated person who's been served from himself or herself suing the bar, the provider, of suing, if you get served as an able-bodied adult, the idea is that you did so under your own volition, and you cannot turn around and file suit against the proprietor for doing that, but the innocent third parties who get annihilated on the highway can. Without a statute, I don't know that that prohibition wouldn't exist either, so you've even got the potential of the able-bodied adults who go in and willingly consume and become under the influence, that could they then sue the proprietor? Arguably, yes, they could, unless the legislation, the legislature adopts something that changes that. So that's another just unknown category out there.
Sticky wicket.
Sticky wicket. I'd like to move this on a little bit here. Is there any other commissioners that, I know everybody, every commissioner has spoke except for myself. Anybody else have something else you want to ask Roger? Okay. With that, Roger, just a couple of things I hope we consider. First of all, growing addresses. When we talk about growers, I agree with, you know, maybe the interpretation that maybe we need four, because there would possibility of two, both adult use and medical, at one address, and another supplier at another address. So I'm, I'd like the commission to think about moving that up to four. Also, the provisioning center and marijuana retailer. I like the idea of splitting those and make those into two each, so we have a total of It's something here, it's zero. And I also agree with Dave Wiegand's, well, it's not just his idea, but it's Roger Zappa's idea, but what Dave Wiegand said about prequalification with the state before we get involved with any special use permits. And then also on page six, when we look at eight, marijuana business, and one of the things that Roger has suggested, we need to have, we either need to make it equal across the board, or we need to provide some rationale why we're allowing adult use in segregated business and resource production, but not in general business, and so on, as you look down that chart. So that's one of the things I'd like us to consider. And with that, that ends my comments on this discussion.
Mike, Jason's been trying to weigh in for quite a while now, if he's got something he wants to say.
All right. Thanks, Dave. Go ahead, Jason.
Just a couple of questions for Roger. I know, Roger, you've been gleaning other municipal ordinances with regard to both medical and adult use recreational. Have there been any permits pulled for consumption in Marquette County that you're aware of?
I don't have any answer to that. Short answer is, I don't know.
Is there any intention of the Township Planning Commission considering consumption in our community?
You know, I personally don't have a problem with that. I mean, maybe we should start out with one?
If you're looking from, input from the commissioners, my vote would be no, that's just another bar in the township. I don't have a problem with one.
Roger, if we don't allow it, would it be considered discrimination?
No.
Okay. So we can pretty much end the last half hour of discussion we've had on that. And I don't think the hinge point on this whole ordinance, board ordinance or otherwise, has to do with consumption locations. I mean, that's what you hear when you go to public hearing, right? That's, you know, we're proposing zero, except for the chairman who thinks maybe we should have one, so, you know, that's what you do. You volley that out there and see what happens and get some comment back. But I don't think the hinge point is on consumption. I think it's on the number of, you know, co-located licenses that were discussed tonight, and I think the Planning Commission did a great job of working through that situation, because Roger did a great job of explaining it. And with regard to consumption, I know we added two, and we had a real loose discussion on that initially, but I also don't think that the information that Roger has gleaned or that we've found out about with the complications of administering that were known at that time either. So I think the Planning Commission did a great job of working through, in short order, what was presented, you know, in the business yesterday. But yeah, I definitely think we should give it a once-over and have that be brought back on the September 9th agenda. The other benefit of having these as board ordinances is that if you do require the state license ahead of things, you know, and let's say the board, you know, we take action to amend Articles 15 and 2 of the zoning ordinance, but the board ordinance can be done in two short meetings, or between two weeks. It doesn't require the same, you know, public hearing, et cetera, that is required of a zoning ordinance text amendment. Those police ordinances can go into effect relatively quickly, which Roger alluded to.
Thank you, Jason. Anything else on 7A?
I'm misreading it. Go ahead. Yeah, I just, to tag on to what Jason was saying, that's why I would be in favor of zero on the consumption, because in true legislative fashion, the state has put out things as it goes along and put into law things without giving it very much vetting as far as what the implications are. And I just think until they get that sorted out, we're better off at zero.
Your point is well taken. We can discuss it September 9th, and maybe there's something new from the state by then. Okay, anything else on 7A? All right. Thank you, Attorney Zappa. It's always a learning experience. So now, let's go back to new business. It's a draft text amendment to prohibit excessive loud, unusual, or explosive use of engine and compressed air braking devices. Jake Brink. Mr. McCarthy?
Yeah, let me get back to our package.
Yeah, let me get back to our packet here and get down to that staff report. But essentially we had some internal discussion within the office. We had some input from the state police and from MDOT. And, you know, it's, it's a tough thing to enforce and that's what we, our basic research brought us to as far as a discussion point. It would be hard to impose ordinances on roadways or rights of way that we do not control and then ask those very bodies to enforce that, those provisions. I'm not saying it can't be done, but in previous attempts by, you know, other municipalities, they've gotten pushback. I think manager Kengas gave us a great example of, you know, some of the things that he tried to do or worked on in Ishoming. There are some safety concerns that MDOT brought about about the benefit of actually being able to utilize the engine to slow down a vehicle instead of relying solely on brakes. I mean, it would be staff's recommendation to probably squash this and to move forward on something different. You know, we definitely have the food truck issue that we've been discussing previously and moving forward. But I don't know, I'm open to your comments. But it just seemed like there was a lot of pushback on it.
Mike?
Mr. Wiegand?
Yeah, this was discussed at the last board meeting and the information that we got from manager Gerard at the time was that he had discussed it with MDOT and with the county and MDOT said, no, plain and simple to federal and state highways, that we could not post that sign and we could not enforce that ordinance on their state and federal highways. The county said, if you want to put that ordinance together, you pay for the signs, we'll put them up on the county roads, but we will not enforce it. So it was the consensus of the board that we just drop it.
Okay, I think that ends that discussion unless somebody else wants to add something. So let's move on to new business 6B. We have a draft zoning text amendment to allow for and regulate mobile food trucks. Discussion. Mr. McCarthy.
Yeah, thanks again, guys. So I guess we're a little bit behind the eight ball on this topic in that we really haven't had an issue with it. You might've seen some of the trucks parked at what was Gander Outdoors or Gander Mountain out in front of Menards from time to time. Now there's one that's almost permanently located next to the Beryl and Beam and they have a little sandwich sign out there. We really don't have anything on the books to regulate food trucks. I personally don't have an issue with them. I would like to see them acquire a township business license at the very least. But I know that there are some fairly detailed zoning ordinances out there with regard to food trucks. And I did send you a couple of articles and or presentations that discuss that. I'll be honest with you. I know Ryan and I have been very busy on a number of other fronts and have not had a whole lot of time to dive in or drill into that deeper. But I was interested to see what the planning commission thought, at least initially on a broad brush stroke with regard to, you know, giving staff some direction on where you'd like to go and if you think it's something that should be addressed moving forward. I know a lot of our retailers or shall I say restaurants in the community are more chain, whether they be regional or national franchises. And, you know, that bodes differently. And I'm sure Commissioner Johnson could really chime in because he was a part of the discussion, I'm sure. When the city was tackling the issue, when you have more local or mom and pop type of retail brick and mortar establishments that all of a sudden these trucks are going and parking on a public street, couldn't even be outside in front of the Casa. And yet here you have, you know, a very successful business that's paying property taxes on a brick and mortar establishment. You have a guy that's in a $10,000 truck with $5,000 worth of kitchen equipment and he's selling bratwurst as an example out the side of the truck. And I can see where that, you know, that rift was created and I think the city worked through that pretty well. But really looking for more of the planning commission's direction, I would, like I said, at the very least, I think that a business license would be appropriate as any business that conducts business in the township. And that allows us to respond and in a case of emergency or at least gives the fire department and the planning department assessing some notification of what's, what's going on. So yeah, those are my comments and really still just a discussion point and something that we wanted to get more input on from you.
Okay, commissioners, comments, suggestions. Yes, sir. Mr. Wiegand?
It would be my opinion that we should move this forward and keep, keep going with the development of a text amendment. I think it's, I don't think it's being fair to the local establishments that have the brick and mortar facilities to allow the rest of them to come in here and be unlicensed and unregulated. I think we, we need to take a look at it. We need to at very minimum require the business license, but I also think we need to be taking a look at where they can set up. Can they set up in a public right of way or can they set up on private property and it's been pretty well vetted through the city and through other municipalities. I don't think it'd take that long to put it up, but I don't think we should think we have any kind of a crisis on our hands. I think if we took our time and we're looking at having something together by late spring, early summer would be plenty soon enough.
Yeah, it's certainly not a money grab by any means by the township or anything. All of our fees are fairly nominal. It's more about accountability and equitable treatment of businesses. We encourage business in Marquette Township as well, you know, and it would just be to create equal treatment amongst those businesses.
Yeah, and that's the only reason I think we can move forward with it.
Okay, other commissioners?
I guess in discussing it with the city, with the DDA, the biggest item that came up was how close to other brick and mortar restaurants you can go. And we came up with 300 feet away from those and also the hours and about whether you're going to let them in residential areas. Because the big thing about that is if you've listened to those food trucks, the compressors are very loud. And if you let them get in residential areas, which they probably won't, but just in case, you don't want somebody sitting outside of somebody's house with that compressor going, you know, hours at a time with nothing that, you can't enforce it to say, I don't want them there. The parking was an issue as far as, you know, how you have to park. What you set up outside of that food truck. We, you have to allow whether you're going to, whether you're going to allow them to set up tables and chairs and garbage cans and all that because they're going to take up more room. You know, it was more of an issue in the city with sidewalks than it would be in the township, of course, but you know, in the township, it's mostly chain restaurants. You don't have very many independent restaurants here. So it's not going to be that much of an issue. And, you know, on the highways, you're probably not going to set up a food truck on the highway anywhere. But, you know, from what I understood, if people want to let a food truck come into the proper, private property, there's not really anything you can do about it. And, you know, kind of like right next to us in valleys, the old valleys building. He's, well, he was starting out with a lot of food trucks there in that area, but I don't think the food trucks want to go in there because they've got their established territories now where they're all at, you know, Black Rocks or, you know, wherever. And maybe when there's another brewery in there, they might want to go there. But private property, you really can't say that you, from what I understood anyways, and correct me if I'm wrong, that you can't really do anything about it. But those are all the issues and, you know, the hours, you know, for restaurant isn't open at a certain time and a food truck wants to go within 300 feet, then that would be permissible. But if they're open, then they can't be within that 300 foot limit.
Mister?
Yeah, those are great comments.
Mr. Hakenin?
Well, personally I like food trucks, but I do understand the investment, like for example, Jim's investment is multi-fold to a food truck. But sometimes a food truck, it's a whole different ambiance. So if you're going to take your wife out for an anniversary dinner, you're not going to buy tacos from a truck. So I think, I think they have their place.
That's only if you want to be happily married after that. That's okay. Good marital.
Mistake once and it's all over. So.
Okay.
But, you know, I like the idea of food trucks. I do agree that license, business license for sure. I would imagine if they're, if they're functioning in the city of Marquette as well, they met the county health department requirements, that kind of stuff. So I think getting a business license to work, to sell their goods in Marquette Township is a great idea.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Mr. Ferraro?
Jason, you mentioned where, where a food truck is located now and I, I didn't get the location. I wonder if you could just repeat that where you observed one that's in operation now in our town.
Yeah, it's the former Northwood Supper Club on Northwoods Road and it's the Beryl and Beam it's called. They do a farmhouse ale and they do my particular favorite is the Point du Nord. They do a couple of good beers there. Actually, I shouldn't say that. They're all great, right? And I think there's a place for them too. In fact, you know, you have places like the Westwood Mall where you could have a corral of food trucks and you could take your date there on a particular night if that was permitted. I agree with the private property issue. Even with Black Rocks, they seem to be parked out on the right of way though. So I guess that's something that we can talk with, with our attorney with as well. But yeah, just some minimal provisions so that everybody's playing on an equal playing field. That's all, that's all that we're asking. And then of course it has to do with signage and other things too that come along with that. You know, even the signage that's down here on Northwoods Road is, it's tasteful. It's a small, you know, sandwich sign or apron sign you'd see on a sidewalk. So it's not a big, you know, lit up billboard or anything. It's just something that, you know, I've been noticing and, you know, not that we haven't, that, not that we've ignored it, but we really haven't had an influx or a big deal or any complaints or anything. It was just more of, you know, let's, let's get this in the books because we're a forward thinking community. We know that there's a place for them. We want to allow for and to regulate them. That's, that's the point.
Okay, we have Attorney Zappa here still tonight and I'd like his input on what we're discussing.
That's largely prerogative of the township on the nature and scope of what they want to regulate. They are, if you get into the, the idea of completely prohibiting them, that's an issue. But I'm not hearing that as being even on the table at this point. You can regulate them and you can require them to obtain business licensing and hours of operation, those types of things. That's, those are permissible subjects.
Thank you. Any other discussion by planning commissioners? Hearing now, we don't have any correspondence listed, anything additional recently other than Attorney Zappa's brief? Okay, let's move on to reports. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Steve.
On my agenda, I have a special use permit hearing request. Am I missing something here? Was that changed?
No, no, you know, I think it's,
6A?
It's actually, it's going to happen on September the 9th, 6A. No, that was draft. No, that was, we did, 6A was a zoning text amendment. Have to do with a discussion on loud braking and then 6B was the mobile food trucks that we just discussed.
What happened to the special use permit hearing request for a short term rental?
That was actually, that was last meeting.
Right. And it's moved down to September the 9th.
It says it's August 12th. Oh, that was that one. Okay, never mind, never mind.
Okay.
A little agenda behind here.
You know, I've got, I've got so many papers here. I might be on one of those too.
You're giving me heart palpitations over here when you say stuff like that.
Oh, wow. We missed something. Okay, 9A township board report. I believe Mr. Wiegand is up for that. You know, maybe he's not.
You're muted, Dave.
We had a board meeting on the 18th and they approved the rec committee's request to develop some informational presentations for the recreational millage that's going to be on the November ballot. And then the board, you've already heard, Mr. Ferraro got appointed to the planning commission. And the board approved pay increases for election workers, effectively raising them five dollars an hour. And they also approved a pay review of that election group every two years. And that was about it for the board.
Okay, thank you, Dave. We have road committee report and guess who's up again?
Committee. About the only thing we discussed at the road committee was the township lighting ordinance and location of lights in, in Trow Bridge Park primarily. Committee member LaRue is working with Ryan to come up with some solutions for trimming lights back and also for, for trimming the brush back around the lights and for looking at the projected cost to put some lights at the intersections that don't have any. That will be upcoming at another road committee meeting. However, it should be worth noting here that the road committee for September, that meeting has been canceled. And that would be it for the road committee.
Thank you, Dave. So having just listened to the rec committee meeting of August 18th and typed up the minutes, here's what's going on with them. Basically the bylaws have been edited by our legal and the planning commission and that's been moved to the board. Schumard Park Trail Kiosk Lamination. I believe Ryan Dietrichson was going to install that. He was going to GPS the trail, add the new trail on there from NTN and laminate that and get those installed. He said by the weekend. Schumard Park Trail Connector. Similar, it's in NTN's hands right now. Our non-point water, our non-point source water project application, we discussed that. And I gave recognition to Superintendent John Kengas, Planner and Zoning Administrator Jason McCarthy and the Director of Superior Watership Partnership Carl Linkwiss for their work on that and moving that forward. Lionsfield Ice Rink Concept Discussion took place. It was suggested that we move this to the agenda, the rec agenda for November following the vote on the Recreation Committee Millage. And we also discussed the proposed millage awareness educational process that we would like the rec committee be involved in. And so we have to ask, and I believe Wiegand asked the board for permission to work on that. And from that, that's about it. The only thing, and I always ask this, but you know, it's easy for me if I have a link to go to. So I can just, without bothering any staff member, I can just go there and review things. Most, I mean, under YouTube, we show the township board and we also show the planning commission meetings, but we don't show the recommended meetings and we don't show the road committee meetings. And I still am pushing for that. So hopefully that'll happen sometime soon. So with that, it was a half hour meeting. It was adjourned at six. And our next meeting is September 15th at 5:30. As I recommend, yes, sir.
Just to mention there, there is a, a work session for the rec committee on September the There is a, a work session for the rec committee on September the eighth. At 5:30, they're going to work on the presentation for the. Informational. Presentation for the rec millage.
Thank you for bringing that up. I forgot about that. Okay, we have Fox Chevrolet lighting update.
Yeah, so. You know, we identified what we believe was a zoning tech or a zoning violation with regard to the lighting that was installed. Particularly along the southerly and southwesterly sections that development and. I have been in touch with Fox. They have indicated that they have reset their timers, not only on the Fox. Subaru location or the Fox Chevrolet location, but the Fox Subaru location as well. And they have installed additional shielding. On the southerly and westerly portions of their, of their lighting fix, so. I have not heard any additional correspondence from the neighbors. I've driven by in recent evenings and the lighting is actually off when it's supposed to be, so hopefully that. You know, situation has been put to bed. And that leads into the, the Fox Subaru. Landscaping. Which you've seen the correspondence from them, the letter that was received. They had to substitute some plant types. And they've also indicated that the bare root plantings that they were going to install were. Postponed by COVID. Obviously, there was a short timeframe in May when those plants could be removed from the soil and then replanted. And due to the executive orders at the time, none of the nurseries were able to actually conduct business, so. What they're proposing to do is install those plantings. Next year in the spring, provided that everything is, you know, somewhat back to normal at that time. I will say though, that the, the amount of trees, the caliper of the tree sizes. And the amount of, you know, what they put in on that location has been. In my view, above and beyond what was necessary. You know, obviously in hindsight, looking back, I wish those mature trees were still there. But considering there's a, there's a better mix of trees that was previously there. And within, you know, several years, I think with the, the earthwork that was done in the mounds that were installed. We'll see some, you know, much needed improvement in that area, but there's definitely more Connor Fers than Broadleaf. And it was mostly Broadleaf in that area previously, although they were more mature trees. There's definitely a better mix of screening in that area, so.
Yeah, if, if you'd also update us on the North Iron Church zoning compliance.
Yeah, so we received correspondence from their architect requesting. What would amount to partial zoning compliance for the interior renovation. And we broke that down into very simple terms and said, do you have a piece of property to apply for a permit for? And there's a little bit of confusion and some complications with the fact that. You know, the Westwood Mall property is located within an accessory's plat. And there are other requirements and Roger can correct me if I'm off base here, but. Basically, there are some other requirements that are involved when you develop or create a new land use. On a, an existing accessory's plat. And as such, they did not define the amount of parking spaces, for instance. Any signage, any addressing the currently. Would be grandfathered lights that are outside in the parking lot. You know, there's, the lease agreement has been demonstrated as being a one-year lease that's renewable. But that only applies with regard to the Land Division Act. It doesn't apply to. How did they frame that, Roger? It had something to do with the fact that.
Issue is they probably should have applied for a, a lot split first. And they have not because, to sever the former JCPenney. Parcel from the rest of the mall. There is a way that that can be accomplished and still satisfied. I won't go to the all the long details, but. That can be done. They haven't applied to do that. That should probably happen before they apply for. Zoning compliance, certainly. The application is essentially incomplete at this time. In my opinion, and I wrote a, an opinion on that and sent it to Jason and my understanding is you've. Communicating with the church.
Okay, commissioners, we've just heard three reports from Planner McCarthy and also Attorney Zappa on one of them. Fox Lighting, North Iron Church, Fox Subaru Buffery Yard Discussion. Do you have any questions? Comments?
I have some.
Okay, Mr. Wigan.
I have a question about, I have a question about Fox lighting or Fox Chevy's lighting. I can, I guess I don't have any appreciation for what they've done there yet because. They've, the lights are not on now because they've complied with the, with the. That part of the ordinance that requires them to be off when a business is off, so you really don't get any sense of where the lighting issue is resolved yet. And from looking at the, the shields that they put on the south and west side, it's my guess that they're not. It's, it's my guess that they just put the shields on and yeah, that's good enough, but they didn't address unless they realign the ones up on. Forty-one that shine directly onto the. Street on the south side. There's two or three lights up there that they just installed that shine all the way over to the property on. Across on the south side of Brooklyn Road and they actually blind the drivers that are coming down Brooklyn Road when those lights were on. And I think the sad part is, is we're not going to get any idea whether they did their job or not until the lights are on because the business is open. I would think with all the problems we've had with them and those lights and all that, that they would. Do some kind of a test to see if it's working. The way it's supposed to before you get into the middle of. Their lighting season now and it's not working. We've got the neighbors complaining again. I. I would think they need to get out there and make sure that what they, their fixes is actually a fix. And they didn't throw some, some minimal shielding on there that, that is not sufficient. I mean, it's pretty clear on what they're supposed to be doing. And the fact that there's not supposed to be any light. Out on path beyond their property line, but I, I seriously doubt if what they did resolves that issue. I think they just, from my. Perception of what they did, they just put some shielding on it and called it a day. And we'll be back revisiting this issue in the winter time and. At that point, the lights will be on every night and we'll have complaints from the neighbors until they finally resolve it again. I just think they need to actually do some, some testing and research. To make sure they're actually doing what they're supposed to be doing before we get to the point where the lights are just on and we're just stuck with it.
So are you suggesting that we need to revisit this on September the ninth?
Well, it's not really a planning commission issue at this time. I understand and I take Dave's comments well. I basically emailed them on late last week and just said, I'm going to talk to the neighbors. I'm going to see what's going on. And they had, I know messed with the, the photometrics and the timers to have them be on motion sensors. Anytime that. There's daylight effectively, so. I, I will, I'll get, I'll get a revised photometric from them and I agree with, I, I was not aware that there were lights that were. Towards the front of the development that were considered to be in violation as well, so. Yeah, if we need to have a re-submit another photometric demonstrating that they have zero. Light trespassing at the property regardless of whether it's commercial or residential and land use adjacent to it.
Thank you, Jason.
Planning Commission issue that we need to take up right now. I'm just, because I've had so many neighbors. Talking to me about it and complaining to me about it and it just seems that we haven't resolved it and it would seem the. The onus of doing that would be on Fox Chevy to make sure that they have actually fixed the problem before. It becomes a problem setting there again like it was the last time and they're just on and. And we have people complaining about it. So I just, I make that comment to the, to you, Jason, because. I don't think Fry or Fox Chevy has done their job yet.
Say hi to Barb for us. Okay, any, any other commissioners have questions or comments about those three items that Jason discussed? Okay, hearing none. We're on to announcements. Any announcements? Okay, no announcements. Public comment. We have a number of people out there in the public. We have Mr. Derosha. We have a man, Manny Len Time. We have a KBIC tribal. And that's all I can read. So this is public comment. If you'd like to. Speak your piece or you have questions or something you want us to address in the future, this is your time.
Commissioner Derosha, am I on?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make just a couple of comments in regards to your retail establishment ordinance. Speaking on behalf of the Market County, as Market County Board and liaisons for the Road Commission. I would like the planning commission to consider. One of the issues that's faced the county, although the county doesn't weigh in on local ordinances. Something to think about that's crossed the desk here is. Parking of these retail establishments and especially currently with the COVID and they're doing drive-through. The county's been faced with a situation where public safety is put at risk with people parking out on. A busy corridors, whether it's US Highway 41, trying to get in and out of the cannabis retail locations. You know, I won't go in, in too terribly into specifics, but what's happening is, is the parking lots aren't sufficient enough to take the number of customers. And. It's creating a hazard, so. Like the planning commission to look at, you know, whether it's the parcels that are being approved or. So there's ample parking, so we don't run into safety issues where. No parking and, and that becomes an issue. And the other thing is, applaud you on the. Direction you're going with the exhaust gas break. That's a federal issue. All those trucks that, I was in the trucking industry for decades and. Any item that's federally put on a truck at the factory. And I believe there's case law on that that Mr. Zappa could follow up, so I think throwing that in, in the gutter is a good idea and thank you for your time. Appreciate all you do for others. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Derosha. Manny Len Time. KBIC tribal. Okay, hearing no public comment. We'll move on. It's getting so dark, I can't read this. Additional comments that the planning commissioners wish to make. Who would like to start out? Okay. That brings up our final motion. And if it's okay with everybody, I will adjourn this planning commission meeting at eight forty-five. And look forward to September the ninth.